Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for October 1st, 2019. Happy Birthday, Tony Oliva. Item number one, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Brennan.
Here.
Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Mayor Mars.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Contreras.
Here.
Thank you very much. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, approval of the agenda. Mr. Reynolds, any changes, corrections?
We have one addition, Mr. Mayor, and that is 10B1 liaison reports fell off again, so we're going to take a look as to why that keeps occurring, but we need to add that. So it'll be right after the city bill list. We'll do our regular 10B liaison reports.
Councilor Whiting?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
I have a motion, a second by Councilor Contreras. Further discussion? Discussion, discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item number three, consent business. Any changes, corrections, Mr. Reynolds?
No, sir.
Councilor Lehman?
Move the consent agenda.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second from Councilor Brennan. Before we vote, we will read the consent agenda into the public record. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. These are the consent agenda items for October 1st of 2019. 4A1 approves the minutes from the September 17th, 2019 meetings. 4B1 adopts ordinance number 02019-TAC-012, which approves a street name change of 128th Street West to Astoria Drive for the segment of roadway between County Highway 15 and the plat of Windermere South, 2nd Edition. And 4C1 adopts resolution number R2019-TAC-104, which accepts work on the 2016 sanitary sewer lateral pipe rehab project, 2016-TAC-6, and makes a final payment of $39,676.09.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, and a second. The consent agenda has been read into the public record. There would be no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Item number five, I would like to call on any resident citizen that would like to come forward and make a comment on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward, state your name and address to the record, and your allegiance to the Minnesota Twins, and welcome. On an item not on the agenda, please come forward. Seeing none, we will move ahead then to item number six, business removed from consent. There would be none. Item number seven, I would entertain a motion to recess to the EDA, Councilor Lehman.
Motion to recess to EDA.
Second.
A motion, and a second by Councilor Brennan. Further discussion? Discussion, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. We stand adjourned for the EDA. Mr. President.
Thank you. We'll call the Shakopee Economic Development Authority Meeting to order for October 1st, 2019. Please make note of the roll. First item after the roll would be our approval of the agenda. Mr. Lehman?
President, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
You have a motion and a second by Contreras. Any discussion, 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 all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion passes. Third on the items is consent business, item number three, includes the EDA bill list.
Mr. Mars? President, I'll offer the consent agenda as stated.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Contreras. Any discussion? Discussion, discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, consent business passes. Item 4A, subordination agreement with Moab Shakopee LLC facade loan. Mr. Kersky.
President, board members, so this is a subordination agreement. The applicant who received that facade loan is refinancing their property. They had a balloon note that came due, and they were able to get a bank to refinance the loan, so we were in third position because there were two loans ahead of us. Now we'll be in second position because they're taking both of those other loans, combining them into one.
Questions for staff. Mr. Lehman?
Mr. President, it says MoBob, and then it says MoAb. Are these two separate entities?
No, it's a typo, sir.
So which one is the accurate one?
I believe it is MoAb.
Typo in that.
On the property card, it's M-O-B-O-B Shakopee LLC.
M?
M-O-B-O-B.
That would be what we'd go with, sir. That's what I believe is on the note.
Okay. Okay, so we'll make that correction. Any other questions for staff? Mr. Mars? Oh, Mr. Lehman, you want to continue?
Just all construction has been completed for the facade improvement?
Mr. President, board members, yes, it was done probably a little over a year ago. This is a 10-year because of the dollar amount.
Any further questions? Mr. Lehman?
I have one more question. We're... Are we basically taking over the responsibility as an EDA for the payment of the facade improvement?
No. So, if you remember how these work, this is a 10-year, every year it goes down 10% until it's zero. And so they had, excuse me, we were in third position because there were two loans in front of it. They're taking those two loans and just making them to one. The new lender wanted us, since we were in third position, wanted us to subordinate to them because they're in first position. So we have nothing to do with the payments. There's no payments on this loan. It just reduces 10% a year. There are no payments on these facade loans. They go on the land records, and the whole incentive is so that people weren't flipping the properties and taking cash out, which is basically the city's money. So the way the loans are set up is they go on the property record so that if you want to sell or refinance and cash out, we get our money back first. So in this particular case, they're not taking any cash out. They're going back for the same amount of the loan that's currently on the property. So in 10 years, that loan is extinguished because they have held the property for 10 years.
I thought there was a repayment based on, and it was like prorated.
Forgivable loan. As long as the owner stays in place.
So, Mr. President, board members, none of these loans have ever been paid back unless the property is sold or it's been refinanced and there's cash out. So that keeps, I think that was set up by the board to ensure that people weren't taking advantage of the investment the city was basically providing, or the EDA was providing to the property owner.
Make an improvement and then flip the property at the city's expense.
Yeah, so if someone were to sell one of these properties, and I remember in 2016, one of these happened where it actually got sold, but you all subordinated that time because it was basically sold to the owner occupant. And on this one, if they were to sell it in five years, we would get back basically 50% of the original loan.
Mr. Kersky, we've subordinated on several of these loans to other.
Mr. President, yes, several times. This has been pretty common.
Any further questions of staff? Ms. Brennan?
I don't have a question, but.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number E2019-18, approving a subordination agreement relating to the facade loan with MoBob. M-O-B-O-B Shakopee LLC, and authorizing the appropriate parties to sign the necessary documents for said agreement.
If I could add a friendly amendment, just to make sure that the terminal, the name is properly.
And, Mr. President, it should be right in the resolution that was done by Kennedy and Grayson.
A second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Discussion, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Last item on the agenda is item 5A, the EDA bill list. Is there any questions on the bill list? That is for your perusal. Item six would be adjourning to Tuesday, October 15th. Mr. Lehman?
President, I'll make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, October 15th.
A motion and a second by, we'll give it to Mr. Mars this time for a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned.
Thank you. We'll reconvene the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for October 1st, 2019. Happy Birthday, Hall of Famer Tony Oliva. And we are on item number 9A1, a rezoned property, RB1. Michael, welcome back.
Mayor and council, so this is rezoning a preliminary and final plat for Latour Terrace. This is the site that we're talking about, so it is both of these sites. Spuck is moving the rezoning forward because through some unexplainable reason, these sites have never had any zoning. So what we're trying to do here is rezone them to the appropriate zoning based on the surrounding property, which is existing RB, R1B zoning, which is what Windermere is, so both of these would be proposed as R1B zoning. They did receive their conditional use permit subject to the rezoning for their site. This is the site of a new water tank, an elevated tank, which would be here. They have a retention pond, and there would be a road access here to serve both the water tank and potential future treatment facility that may be built at a later date. So here's the preliminary plat. It creates two outlots and a new lot which Spuck would purchase. And the final plat is similar. Here is the lot that actually Spuck would purchase, and then we would have two outlots which would be platted later, similar to what we did with Windermere. Something will move forward. There already is a step out to this road so that development can move forward.
Questions of staff? Councilor Lehman?
Can we go back a slide to the driveway, the proposed driveway? There it is. Okay, that's coming off of Zumbro. Now I'll go back forward. So how does the?
So, councilmember, so Windermere has agreed, this is already a platted area. They're going to sell this little tiny piece or give it to Spuck so they can get access to this lot. So this is an existing piece that D.R. Horton has. So that's allowing them access into this lot. At some point in the future, they may have access, depending on how this develops, off to the west here, but we have to get them access today from a public street, so that's how we're doing it.
And they'll gain access through that Astoria Drive or whatever it is?
Yes.
All right. Other questions of the staff? And so the surrounding area is on, is for the RB1, so it matches that. The Spuck property would be RB1, and then they would operate, come back with a conditional use, correct?
Mayor and council, they already have their conditional use permit. The Board of Adjustments granted it, subject to the property being platted and rezoned.
All right. Other questions of staff? Other questions of staff? If not. Councilor Contreras?
I'd like to make a motion.
Huh?
I'd like to make a motion.
Does the applicant want to come forward and make a comment on this? Please come forward, state your name and address to the record, and welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Dave Brown from Dave Brown Railties. I represent the Latours, and we are in favor of it as stated. Would just like to point out, the northeast parcel, the 40 acres on the map, in the northeast area, is ready to go, and a lot of interest. The 80 acres to the southwest, the east 33 acres or so, is good to go. But the west 40 has a problem. It cannot get sewer and water because of the, oh, I think it goes up by Norcore. There's a problem there, and I just wanted to foreshadow that, that that has to be solved. Otherwise, we're good with R1B. We've been told that the west 40 of the 80 could potentially be upzoned, depending upon the market conditions, et cetera, but it would be potentially appropriate to have a denser development there. Thank you.
Questions of the developer, or their representative? Seeing none, Mr. Brown, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number, I think it's, I don't know, 2019-011, and ordinance approving the rezoning of property to urban residential R-1B zone, and approve resolution number R2019-096, a resolution approving the preliminary and final plat of Latour Terrace.
Thank you. Councilor Whiting? I have a motion, a second. Further discussion? Discussion? Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving ahead to 9A2, application to the Met Council for a tax-based revitalization account request. Michael, welcome back.
Mayor and council, so you approved two similar resolutions back in April for this project. However, at the time, they did not have a Minnesota Pollution Control Agency kind of action plan, and we were the applicant for that. That has since moved forward, so we can now reapply. So the way it would work is Terricon, who is the Gong Company's consultant, would actually submit this to the Met Council with a remediation plan for the site. If you remember, this site has up to 19 feet of garbage. It also has volatile organic compounds from two sources. One is a former oil site that was across the street. The other is from a former dry cleaner that's also across the street. So as part of that, they would come up with a remediation plan, and potentially could be funded. If you also remember, there's two different funding sources here. The Met Council has money, which comes from the state, through the legislature, through property tax collections, and then Deed also has funds that they receive, both from the state and also from the federal government to do cleanup. This is one of the reasons why, when we joined livable communities, we adopted several other policies along the way, including the fair housing policy, because some of this money is passed through money from the federal government.
Questions of staff? Councilor Lehman?
Couple of questions, Mayor. First one is, if we're going after grant dollars from two different sources, if they're both successful, would it be up to 100% of the actual cost?
Mayor and council, the Met Council funds and the Deed funds are usually 50%, so it's a match. So the developer would match that through basically the TIF agreement that we have.
Okay, so the best we can do is 50% if we're successful on both. Okay? Do we know what the total cost is now?
It was well over a million dollars, so potentially they could get up to half a million dollars. There has not been one made in Shakopee in, I think, forever. So we will score better because of that, and this is also an impacted site because it's close to the river, and it's also going to be on top of the city street, and basically the property has pretty close to zero value right now. So one of the things that Deed looks at is, will this long-term create more capital investment in the community? And this project should do pretty well on that score. It's a very competitive process, however. So all the Met Council cities, there's a certain percentage set aside for the non-metro. So Minneapolis and St. Paul get their own set aside, so we will be competing for outside of the Minneapolis-St. Paul.
One last question. What's the anticipated turnaround time of knowing if we're successful or not?
Mayor and council, I believe the deadline is November 1st, and they make a decision in 30 to 60 days, so.
Year end, we should know.
Yep.
Okay.
I think, you know, we've been working on this project for, seems like, two years, and with the dirty dirt and some contamination. I've seen money come out of both these, this revitalization account and the Deed for different areas around the metro, and I think that, given the proximity later to the river that you said, the development of an undeveloped lot, for the most part, that in a close proximity to downtown, it has some of those key points that at least the Met Council will be looking at. I think Deed looks more truly at the redevelopment of a site that has a problem, some problem remediation of the dirt. So really hoping for a great application and opportunity to get some help here.
Mayor and council, these have, as I said, a significant amount of money has been spent in Minneapolis and St. Paul. The plant that created Whiteout has been one of the sites where they poured a lot of money into because it was highly contaminated. So some of the highly contaminated sites have been covered, so they're looking now, I think, more to the suburbs for some opportunities.
Right. Other questions of staff? Other questions of staff? If not, thank you, Michael. Councilor Brennan?
I would like to make a motion to approve resolution number R2019-0105, excuse me, authorizing the submission of a grant to the Metropolitan Council for a tax-based revitalization account funding for the environmental cleanup of the Riverfront Bluff redevelopment site.
I have a motion, a second. Further discussion? Discussion? Do you have any more? Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you all. Moving forward then to 9A3, which is the authorization to submit a Deed grant for cleanup, a grant for the River Bluff redevelopment, and these both go hand in hand. Is that correct? And if we don't need a presentation from staff because we kind of heard one, and Councilor Whiting?
I'd like a presentation. No, I'll make a motion to offer.
We're under a time constraint here tonight.
That's right. I'll make a motion to approve resolution number R2019-106 for application to Deed for a cleanup grant for the Riverfront Bluff redevelopment area.
Second.
I have a motion, a second by Councilor Contreras. Further discussion? Have we had any direct discussion with, I apologize. Michael, Deed has a new director here that I've read several articles about his workforce training and redevelopment in the suburbs, like you had mentioned. Have we had any direct contact with that office?
Mr. Mayor, Jen Burlington, Mr. Reynolds and I actually met him at a Greater MSP conference. I think there's some enthusiasm to get things done. I think the other thing is that Joe Whiting and I both attended the Deed Met Council Committee meeting that was sponsored by Metro Cities and, what's the other organization? League of Minnesota Cities. So the league put that on, and we were one of the only suburbs from around here, because that was one of the requirements to submit. You had to go to kind of a special training day. So we interacted with all of the Deed staff and all of the Met Council staff that actually run these programs, and were able to ask a lot of good questions.
Thank you. Motion on the table, a second. Further discussion? Discussion, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving ahead to 9B1, the Prior Lake Outlet Channel, and we'll have a presentation, and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I hear we were trying to stay under an hour, but I think there's like 40 minutes left, so I'll try and keep it shorter than that. This presentation is on the Prior Lake Outlet Channel, specifically the master plan that we've been working on. Some recent stuff that we've been working on with the Prior Lake Outlet Channel was a memorandum of agreement update that we brought to city council on June 18th. And what that memorandum agreement is, is it's basically an agreement with cooperators, which include the City of Shakopee, the Prior Lake, Spring Lake Watershed District, the Shakopee-Middelwacuden Sioux Community, and the City of Prior Lake. And agreements in some form kind of date back to about 1981 for this channel. And when we brought that agreement to council, there were some questions. We had referenced a master plan in that narrative, and there were some questions that kind of came up, so we're following up with this presentation to kind of touch on that and give some information. So the master plan, it's a document really just to help facilitate P-Lock activities, which primarily address capacity issues with the channel, bank stability, erosion issues, and easement issues. Before we dig into the master plan, at a high level, the memorandum of agreement is an agreement to help facilitate the use, operation, and maintenance of that Prior Lake Outlet Channel and the outlet structure. The figure that I have shown here on the right is the outlet channel from Prior Lake all the way down to Blue Lake through Shakopee. And you can see that this channel's broken up into several segments. There's eight segments. That helps in understanding how the agreement and ultimately the cost-share allocation for the channel has kind of developed. So Table 1 that I have shown just summarizes areas from these different cooperators that contribute to the channel. You can see Segment 4, Shakopee has a large area that, from a tributary, that dumps into the channel in Segment 4. And then again, Segment 7, there's a lot of commercial and industrial area that drains to the P-Lock in that area. The Prior Lake, Spring Lake Watershed District doesn't have an area associated with with developing the cost share. They have a maximum flow rate that outlets Prior Lake that goes into the cost-share formula for them. Table 4 is ultimately the cost share. So as you can see, Segments 1, 2, and then most of 3 aren't within the boundaries of the City of Shakopee, and we don't have area that drains to those segments. So projects that occur in those segments, there wouldn't be, there'd be nowhere, very little for Segment 3 cost share for any projects that occur in those sections. Sections 4 through 8, though, you can see that cost share increases to 22 to 44%. Even though those segments are fully within Shakopee, there's still water flowing through those sections from the other cooperators, and that's why they have cost share for projects that would occur in those segments.
Kirby, just back on this previous chart here, just, I know that Shakopee is the end of the line, right? Before it gets to the Minnesota River. I'm just looking at the segment flow from really section. I'm just looking at the, the segment flow from really Section over on the right side of your chart with Segment four all the way to eight, and obviously we're carrying the lion's share of, of everything, right? Because it's the end game, right?
Yeah, I guess, what, what do you mean by that question?
You know, as I look at this, it's just, uh, from Spring Lake and then trying to manage the, the Prior Lake Outlet Channel and the water level on Prior Lake, and then at times they just, the, we just end up with so much water in our segments.
Yeah, so, okay. Yeah, so the cost-share formula is broken down on tributary areas, and then, um, that tran, there's, uh, flow rates that then kind of come from those areas to help build what that channel capacity, um, is designed to. And that was one of the things in the master plan, what we were evaluating was the capacity of the channel. So, uh, Prior Lake, Spring Lake Watershed District, their cost-share allocation is from the discharge of Prior Lake. Um, and that outlet structure, uh, the way that it's designed has a maximum flow rate, um, and, and doesn't exceed that, uh, with a significant variation. Um, and that's how their cost share is set up. Uh, so the memorandum of agreement that was brought to council is considered an interim update. Looking back, it seems like, um, the MOA's kind of been updated every, uh, four-plus years to address various things. This, uh, updates interim in that, uh, the long-term strategy for the cooperators is to, um, explore taking ownership and maintenance responsibilities of their respective sections, which would in turn lessen administrative, uh, administration, um, costs with the P-Lock, and, but still maintain an agreement for cost sharing. So what that might look like is instead of projects being facilitated through, uh, Prior Lake, Spring Lake Watershed District, who is the administration for the P-Lock, the respective cities would, um, possibly take on those initiatives to reduce the administrative costs associated with.
Appropriate cost sharing, it doesn't say, uh, fair and equitable? I did, that's part of my point, is that we get all this water, and we're impacted on the, the end of the, end of the trail here, right? Through our community, and it's just a lot more water than we see at the beginning up, up the, up the channel here. And then if they're looking for the cooperators to take ownership and maintenance responsibilities, I think that we would have more because we just have more flow, um, in our section, uh, sections. And that, a little concerning, so that's why I brought that up.
And much of that flow isn't ours.
Yeah, it's coming from our neighbors, right.
Yeah, and that's why, um, the goal is still to, you know, maintain a, a cost sharing, like that previous table, even though Segment eight's at the end of the line in Shakopee, I think it is around forty-four percent, um, of the, the flow volume cost share that, uh, would be. So if a project took place in Segment eight, Shakopee would be responsible for forty-four percent of that cost. Uh, and then the other cooperators would make up the rest. Um, and then likewise, in Segments one, two, three, if there were projects there, there's no land, um, from Shakopee flowing into those sections, so then there wouldn't be any cost to the City of Shakopee for projects in those segments.
Continue.
Mayor and council members, if, if I can interject also, um, just to make sure we're clear on it. So the, the Prior Lake Outlet, its maximum of it, sixty-five CFS, that's the maximum they can open up and allow the water to flow out. By the time it gets to Blue Lake, uh, we have, we have more than double that flow, depending on the rain event, and, and the majority between the different cooperators, the majority of that flow actually is coming from a lot of Shakopee land.
Natural runoff into the ditch.
Right.
And not from the Prior Lake Outlet Channel.
Correct.
So it's our own natural water.
A, a big chunk of it is, you know, more than, depending, again, on the event, uh, more than sixty-five CFS. And you should also note that there's also a big chunk coming from, um, the SMSC property that comes around and back through Shakopee and in there. So, so I wanted to put an emphasis, that's why it's important to, to have this agreement in place. But to the point of the lion's share, we feel that we can better manage, maintain, and operate it. And then, um, like Kirby indicated, we can minimize the administration costs that we're having to basically pay back, um, to the administrators of the Watershed District for that. So ultimately, I mean, Kirby will get into this, um, the goal is to, to reduce the costs by us taking more ownership of it than it currently has, so.
So noted, thank you, Steve. Kirby, continue.
Yeah, so the flow, flow rates in the channel, I think it's, uh, yeah, the outlet of Prior Lake, sixty-five CFS is the max, and I think once you get down to Segment eight, uh, like the hundred-year design capacity analysis is upwards of four hundred CFS, so it's quite a bit more coming from the land than the, the Watershed District. So now, moving on to the master plan, after a little bit of background on the MOA, this idea started back in April two thousand eighteen, um, and the purpose of it is to, was to assess the current conditions, um, channel capacity, bank stability, easements, and then help guide the P-Lock act, uh, activities over a five-year timeframe. Uh, so that was a nice laid-out plan, and, and from year to year, it wasn't rethinking or rehaving conversations, uh, that we've already had. So, uh, once these initiatives have been, um, completed, then that's when the consideration of a update to the MOA and, um, how that, uh, alternative methods for managing the channel would take place. First item, channel capacity, so, uh, with, with that, um, evaluation, there was a hydraulic model that was updated, and it was updated with current precipitation and flow estimates. Channel geometry was improved to better simulate what the, um, channel conditions were and storage that was in the, uh, channel. And, um, the crossing, culvert crossings, those crossing information was also updated in the, um, model to better reflect the hydraulics of those crossings to evaluate, uh, capacity. The model, uh, overall, the system worked, you know, pretty well. There were three, um, culvert crossings that were identified with capacity issues. And historically, these have been noted as the maintenance issues, and also roads overtopping and culverts washing out. So those, uh, include, are kind of in the middle, uh, just upstream of Segment four, uh, mostly in Segment three, um, but that's a Pike Lake Outlet, Camp Kichiyapi driveway, and, um, Strauss driveway. The, um, P-Lock, so in the master plan, um, we've been still working on developing, uh, a plan to address these culverts, um, uh, but that's in, you know, still, this master plan's an ongoing kind of document, uh, as issues are identified, then we kind of work through them and document and come up with a plan to address them for that five-year plan. The, uh, next item, um, that this plan was to look at was bank stability. So, um, there's erosion issues, uh, to the banks along the entire length of the P-Lock through all the segments. Uh, and looking back, there was a, a large precipitation event back in two thousand fourteen that caused quite a bit of erosion and damage to the P-Lock, uh, channel at that time. There were FEMA funds that, uh, uh, the cooperators went after and got to address those issues. But the FEMA pro, uh, dollars are only to address erosion that occurred from that event. Uh, there were documented erosion issues prior to that event, um, that would not be covered under FEMA, those FEMA dollars, and then there's erosion issues that have occurred since that event that also wouldn't be covered for those FEMA, uh, project dollars. Uh, that project actually isn't complete yet. We're kicking off this week, the, uh, stabilization efforts in Shakopee, um, within those segments. Uh, part of that's just, there was a lot of permitting and, um, stuff with FEMA to work through, but that's finally been addressed. The next item is easements. So, uh, again, this is an item still being worked through in the master plan. But there's, uh, various issues with the easements, um, over the outlet channel from Prior Lake all the way down through Shakopee. Some of these issues would be, uh, alignment issues, so the channel may have moved, or the original easement, uh, may not reference well with where the channel location is. Uh, there could be, um, access issues, so there could be a section or a property where, um, uh, you, you can't really access that section unless you went up or down the channel itself, which might not be feasible due to woods and other stuff. And then, um, there are a couple missing easements, uh, and then it, uh, incomplete documents where there might not be a signature, or they might not have been recorded, um, which we're all looking into yet. Uh, and then, to conclude, um, the, the recent MOA that was updated, that's considered an interim MOA, uh, with, uh, with the master plan to help facilitate a five-year plan, um, to move to looking at alternative methods for managing the P-Lock. Questions?
Kirby, thank you. Further questions? Councilor Lamond?
Couple questions, Mayor. First one is the, uh, capital plan that you had on the screen a minute ago for the various sections and dollar amounts, there it is. Where are these funds coming from?
Yeah, so the, so this table, um, is specifically for bank stabilization. And, uh, so these funds would be, uh, paid for by the cooperators. Um, and, and you can see how there's, uh, erosion issues in the different segments, so this is where that cost-share table, uh, comes into play. So Segments one, two, and three, the work that's occurring there, um, Shakopee wouldn't have any cost share with those sections. Uh, but then Segments four through eight, then there's, uh, the cost-share table. So I'll back up to that here. Uh, that would be Table four, um, so Section, Segment four, the, uh, cost of that project, um, Shakopee would, um, be responsible for twenty-two percent of that project, or in Segment eight, it would be forty-four percent.
And that cost share applies to all of the projects?
Yep.
So I looked at, I was looking at the same thing here. So Segments four through eight, which impacts Shakopee, and then if our cost share is thirty percent of that, I did some just rough math. I think the cost of four through eight was a little north of five hundred thousand. And then you're saying that we would pay thirty percent of that?
Roughly. Yep.
Roughly, and that's a rough math.
Okay.
Mayor and council members, I, I added the numbers up, Kirby and I did, and, um, there's that, looking on the screen right now, in twenty nineteen, there's that hundred fifty thousand dollars. That's actually part of Ridge Creek, so we're not gonna pay the watershed for our project. So that's not necessarily a contribution that will be given to the watershed. But with our percentages, I, I estimated about, um, that we would be paying about two hundred seventy thousand dollars for that five-year plan. And that, and we would, uh, be proposing to take that out of the stormwater fund.
Councilor Lamond?
And just so I'm clear, but the way I'm understanding this, this is for, uh, bank stabilization only. And if we're gonna, if we, as a city or any entity along this, want to do their own project, that cost would be their own, correct? Above and beyond the, the bank stabilization that this plan is taking care of. So there might be a.
It depends, it depends on the project.
Well, let me give you an example.
Yeah.
Let's say that this agreement is gonna fix some bank stabilization area, areas in this capital improvement plan based on the formula of all the operators. Let's say one of the issues is capacity underneath a driveway, and that entity decides to take it out and put a larger culvert in, fix that problem. That cost then is borne by the operator in that specific area, but the bank stabilization is still part of this agreement.
Yeah, so culverts, um, that cost is, uh, the cost of the landowner. That's how it's spelled out in the MOA, um, where this, uh, these, this other project like bank stabilization would be this cost-share table.
Landowner. So if you have a private dwelling with a culvert underneath its driveway, and all the water from everybody is going underneath their driveway, it's their cost to improve that culvert for everybody else's water?
Yes, there's been a lot of conversation about, um, about that with the cooperators, um, but it, it's the.
Maybe I'm misunderstanding, if it's the cooperators' area of responsibility and it's their cost, that's one thing. If it's the individual private property owner's responsibility, that's a different thing.
Uh, Mayor and council members, Kirby, can you, can you go to, uh, this page right here? So for Shakopee, we don't have to worry about that too much, so we have the Strauss driveway. So that's why, that's why Kirby says it's up to the property owner, because that culvert crossing is actually their driveway. But that's in Segment three, we have point-three percent cost share on that. So it's actually, it's insignificant to the city in the grand scheme of things. So is a property owner gonna pay that, or is the city as, as far as that project goes? We gotta, we gotta figure that out, but it's an insignificant amount of money for that crossing. And that's the one, that's the only crossing or culvert that we really have to worry about. To bring, again, this master plan is to bring it up to a certain design standard, consistent through the entire channel, so then we can talk about, so then it was, everything's designed appropriately and constructed appropriately, so then we can talk about taking ownership and maintaining it at the civil, city level. So that was the goal, is get it up to the standard, then we'll take ownership of it. Um, so, so culvert crossing, we should, let's not worry about that, but the bank erosion and making sure there's capacity in, in the channel, that's what we're focused on in Shakopee here, to make sure that we have a, an adequately-designed channel through Shakopee.
My last, last, last question. The, and I, you know, I'm trying to be consistent throughout this process over the years to, to address some of my concerns, and I'm, I'm trying to make sure that some of these concerns are being addressed in this agreement. The, the last one I had was, uh, at some point, we're looking at the quality of the water at the end, going into the river. And we can control what we're putting into that channel, but we can't control what's coming from other areas. What happens when that day comes that the water quality isn't to somebody's standard, state, or whoever, at the end? And it's because of something out of our jurisdictional control.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, from the very beginning throughout this process, uh, that has been one of the two items I have been most focused on. And, uh, just because Shakopee happens to be at the bottom of the hill, doesn't mean that we're responsible for cleaning everybody's water. So at any time I've talked with any of the cooperators on this agreement, that is something that, that they all know is a concern. Generally, although I haven't been involved in the details up to this point, generally, the agreement has been, you know, we will flush that out in the future once we get this particular, uh, uh, because the channel hasn't been up to design standards yet. They need to get it up to the design standards, and then frankly, it's a lot easier for us to maintain our own portions of the channel as opposed to trying to have, uh, uh, the Watershed District do that, or us do it on their behalf. If we can just go out there and do it, it makes it a lot easier, and it can be brought into our work plan. But it is a concern, it has always been a concern, and it will continue to be a concern, and, uh, I've been very clear, we're not responsible for everybody's dirty water. We'll be responsible for ours, and then, uh, work towards, uh, finding that solution in the future.
Thank you. Other questions of staff? I want to compliment staff, um, you know, four years ago, this agreement really wasn't in place, and it was, um, I think there's more cooperation, collaboration on what needs to be done up and down the channel. I know Bill Reynolds stepped right into it, um, because it was a concern, and I think we have more representation now. And to bring it up to the standard, I think is a, is a good thing that wasn't happening five years ago. So thank you. Questions?
Mayor, I'd just like to point out that, uh, many people don't realize the importance of the. of this. Case in point would be when the County Road 16 culvert failed. Then everybody's all of a sudden, like, in tune to what's going on. It is an important topic, and it's important that, you know, that we look at this from different aspects and try to manage it for not only now, but the future. So it's a good start, and I think it's going to need some tweaking over time, and we'll go from there.
It's clearly a work in progress, and will continue to be.
Good work.
Thank you, Kirby.
Thanks.
Great presentation, and thank you. All right, moving ahead then to 10A, the city bill list for our review, and then we would move to 10A1. Liaison...
10B.
10B?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And what was 10B? I apologize. Oh, liaison report, and administrator report, well, thank you. Councilor Brennan?
I went to the Unified Transit Plan, which is the Scott County Transit, we're working on the Scott County overall transit plan, and I also attended the Dimation Inc. ribbon cutting. And Dimation Inc. is a very innovative in manufacturing, so I congratulate Ed Knudsen for coming here to Shakopee, and I hope we can welcome more businesses like that into our community. And I was driving here today, and I noticed all the rain and all the leaves that are starting to come down, and I adopted a storm drain, and I named it Thomas Holmes, and it's on Sixth Avenue and Holmes, so. So I encourage everybody now that the leaves are coming down to keep making sure they're watching the storm drains and the, so.
Folks at home can name their own storm drain, too.
Yeah, I can be able to name it, yeah. And I might have kids across the street and things as I progress here, so.
Good. Councilor Lehman?
Well, I'm not going to name my storm drain like that, I'm going to name it after like a band, like maybe Rush or something, because the water seems to go down it, you know?
Hill?
Spock didn't have a meeting last night, apparently it's the first of the month, and that was the end of the month, so I didn't have a meeting, which was good, I was in bed anyway, so I don't have a report.
Thank you. Obviously, attended the two-day, over-a-week strategic plan, planning session that we had here. We missed you, Councilor Lehman, Lehman, last night. I did want to really thank the staff for their involvement and engagement. We're all in this together, and I very much appreciate the discussion with staff, the input as we work through that strategic plan, I thought that was a good exercise, and we will see more down the line. Just a couple items of note here. This Saturday, October 5th, at the Community Center, fitness sampler, if you want to try to see what works for you, from eight to eleven. Next Monday, on October 7th, our Shakopee Fire Department is having an open house, and that's five to eight, free and fun and great opportunity. And then the following Saturday, Pumpkins in the Park, Saturday, October 12th, from four to six. And that is my report. Councilor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did not have any liaison duties to report, but I did attend the strategic planning, and I would also like to thank staff, they put in a lot of time, and we're all active in the process, so appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilor Contras?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple things for the school, the Shakopee Public Schools, they released their preliminary levy, and I will turn that into the department that needs to have that. And also for the 2020 and 21 middle school attendance area information, new attendance areas will be implemented in 2021. School areas will balance enrollment at the middle school level while also allowing us to, you know, for them to plan for future growth. And all that information is available at the shakopee.k12.mn.us. That's it.
Great, thank you. Administration report, Mr. Reynolds?
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of council, it gives me great pleasure to present you with the 2019 Planning in Context Award from the American Planning Association Minnesota Division for Envision Shakopee. This was spearheaded by the 2018 Minnesota Planner of the Year. Notice how we have these awards racking up? Don't forget, we also had an Engineer of the Year at one point that was with us, all in here in Shakopee.
Shakopee?
Here in Shakopee. Isn't that amazing? Envision Shakopee, as you know, we did this plan differently. We were not going to develop the plan in the back room with a bunch of smart people with pointy pencils and then come out here and tell everybody what they should want. This plan took eight months of being in the public, asking questions before developing anything, and the public really was the impetus for this plan. From their input, we came up with the ten big ideas that ultimately formed the basis for this plan. Mr. Kersky and his department, Joe Whiting, who took over for the efforts of Eric Weiss, when Eric left us, you know, they really, they did it right, and we were recognized by the Minnesota chapter of the National Planning Organization. That's amazing, that's something to be proud of, and now, Mr. Kersky, let's see what we can do with our park planning, because we're not going to rest on our laurels, let's see what we're going to do with that plan. So congratulations, Mr. Kersky and your planners, all of the staff of the city who worked hard on this, include more than just the planning department, and it's something that we all should be proud of. And congratulations, City Council, you were the ones that spearheaded and allowed us to do this differently, and clearly, somebody thinks it was the right thing to do.
Councilor Whiting?
You know, I'd like to add that part of the big ideas that came out of that plan weren't part of our discussion at the strategic planning level, and so we're not leaving that plan on the shelf either, we're taking it and actually working on it and putting it out there and seeing how do we achieve those strategic plans, and we'll get there.
Councilor Lehman?
How much was the cash prize that came with that award?
Do we go to national, is there a national one?
I'd like to, congratulations to staff, the council, but I really think the accolades really go to the residents of Shakopee. I think, never seen engagement so involved with the amount of people that touched, looked, commented on that plan. Eric Weiss drove surveys, comments, the staff, you know, we do a city survey, four or five hundred people, this had three hundred people, a couple of open houses.
Three thousand people. Three thousand?
Three thousand. We had a couple of open houses. I was talking about our regular surveys that we have, just a couple hundred responses compared to the three thousand, so. And then to put it all together in a much different-looking document, comp plan than I've ever seen, it generated ideas rather than a static plan, and lo and behold, then it gets recognized by a state organization. Hats off to everybody, congratulations, and thank you for your hard work, and we'll work at managing and implementing the plan. Other comments? All right, moving ahead. Item number 11, other business. Other business before this board? If not, would entertain a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, October 15th, 2019, at 7:00 PM.
We have a motion and a second by Councilor Contras. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned at 7:58.